Did you call the road, please?
Robert Kraus.
Present.
Jason Blair.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in God and in visible with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held February 17th, 2015. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held December 9th, 2014. Item C, I think that's 2015, isn't it? Oh, it is 14, I'm sorry. Item C, again. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $2,529,919.84.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on these items? Would you call for the vote?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider an appointment to the planning commission to fill an unexpired term.
I would recommend Chris Rickman from CFI Engineering.
Okay.
All the candidates were qualified. We have a couple of folks that have some real estate experience on the planning commission already, and this would bring somebody back in with the architectural engineering background. So, that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I was second, Stan.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Just want to tell everybody, thanks for applying. We did have some really good candidates, and hopefully they can serve in the future. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is approve the final plat of the Dollar General Moore located in the southwest quarter of Section 25, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 34th Street and east of Broadway Avenue. Application by Moore 15-880 LLC, Mark Hummer. Planning commission recommends approval of this item, 7-0. It's a more of one.
Mayor, council, this property is located south of southeast 27th Street and east of South Broadway. It is currently zoned C3, medium commercial. The final plat consists of one lot on one and a half acres. Because it is one lot, it does fall under the simplified plating process where just the final plat is required. Access is provided from South Broadway Avenue with one curb cut proposed, and there is no floodplain located on the property. Water and sewer are available to serve the site. The applicant is proposing onsite detention. The drainage plans have been reviewed and approved by the city's consulting engineer. Staff recommends approval of this application.
Any questions, Jeff, or you?
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on these items? Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a permit for Dawson Geophysical authorizing the performance of geophysical seismic testing on city right-of-way or on city property.
Mayor and council, Dawson approached the city and requested a permit to do some geophysical operations for oil and gas explorations. And basically, the boundaries, the east boundary would be Eastern Avenue, and approximately 23rd Street would be the northern boundary, and then it would take in the entire city limits west and south of those two boundaries. There is, Kevin Worth is actually here with Dawson Geophysical Company, and he could give a better explanation of what the process is and how the operation would work. So, I'd like for Mr. Worth to come forward. He could answer your questions better than myself.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. May I hand out books to you guys real quick? Rather than just read these at home, rather than go through the whole thing tonight. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
What Dawson Geophysical, through our client trade resources, we're a geophysical exploration company, so we image the subsurface for the oil and gas companies. And what they've done is they have the short junction units that are partially in, a little bit in Moore and then over to the west, and they have that federal unit, and we're going, we are planning to image that for them. And part of that does come into the described area that Stan talked about here in the city of Moore. Dawson Geophysical brings to this project many, many years of urban seismic. It's difficult. It takes some effort, takes some specialized equipment, and Dawson has taken the time to do this. We've had probably 1,500 square miles of urban seismic in the Fort Worth metro area, as well as other urban seismic throughout airports, most recently, just in the last six months in the city of King Fisher, city of O'Carchie, and we've been in Alva recently. So, we bring to the table a lot of expertise. And the thing about the program that we, actually, I could probably show you here on this and kind of pass this around, we have these maps available if each want one individually. But the really good thing about this is that it's not every street, a triangle's a receiver and a source point, or where the vibrosized buggies would go, or reds. So, it's not every street by any means of the imagination. And the intent, as you will see, is that we pre-describe and put through the right-of-way for the city places where sources and receivers would go. This is very typical of urban seismic, especially over what we've learned through the Fort Worth metro area. And so, what we do is we bring in specialized equipment, and the specialized equipment's in two different ways. We use wireless technology now for, and pictures of all of this are in the book, but we use wireless technology for our geophone locations. So, throughout the city, and we really want to stress that, safety is absolute paramount with Dawson, and throughout the city, not only for our equipment, but for city buildings, city properties, and for the public as a whole. So, wireless technology is the leading edge of this technology. And so, there's no cables that connect a box to a box to a box. So, an example of that equipment sits right back here, and this is at any given location, do you have the box right there? Yeah, at any given location, that box is all that sits on the ground in the right-of-way. And what we'll do is we put those two geophones, and they just sit, those three geophones, they just sit there and listen. That's all they're doing, is just continuously recording as we are sending sound waves into the ground and reflecting back off the rocks. The equipment that generates the sound waves that send the, that they're listening for, there are, they're specialized urban vibrosized buggies. And what these buggies do, they're about the size of an F-150 pickup, and they will just move up and down the city streets. What they do, when they send their sound waves down into the ground with a protected pad for any of the city infrastructure, such as the blacktopping or the pavement, once they're done, they never come back. They're there at a location for minutes and move on. And so, this is a relatively, in terms of seismic acquisition, it's a very quick situation that we'll be at in the city of Moore. And so, one of the other things that we do that will be ongoing during this process will be this idea of this monitoring process, this engineering monitoring that we do to protect infrastructure and to protect buildings and things to that sort. And the Bureau of Mines, the federal government, has a federal guideline for, in essence, sound waves hitting buildings, or sound waves against pipelines in the underground, or sound waves against other structures. And this is a federal guideline. And what we do is we adopt this federal guideline, but we actually halve the guideline again. And many times, we'll go down yet even a little bit further, and this is monitored every day of every time that we're in the city itself. And this monitoring is absolutely meant to protect the city itself, and the public, and the public structures. So, through the course of these 1,500 square miles in the city of Fort Worth, for instance, there was constant monitoring done, and we, there was no damage claimed from the city against any city infrastructure during that time, because we constantly monitor. And again, by putting down to about, to a level of about a third of the federal guideline for that, we ensure ourselves confidently that it's not damaging anything. And we empirically know that. We have a couple of tests in here that we do, and we have done in the past, that we can make the full test available to you and to Stan and the engineers. But one was underground infrastructure, for instance, fragile clay pipelines, things, sewer lines of this nature. And the city of Arlington actually dug up the city street down to the clay pipe, and we put all of our monitoring efforts onto that pipe, put a camera in the pipe, re-buried it, re-blacktopped it. We did our full work over the top of that, and a full report came out that we made available to the engineering staff over at the city of Arlington, of which, through the camera work, we saw that there was no, actually, you couldn't even tell we were there. Our seismic wave, the sound waves dispersed so quickly, we found out, which is a little disconcerting to a geophysicist, by the way, but it disperses so quickly, we couldn't, we couldn't even, in many cases, trigger the monitor on the buried infrastructure. And the city engineers in the final report said that they saw no reason to not let us do what we've done. In conjunction to that, we did a local test where we just measured things like train traffic and just city traffic as a whole at an intersection, just monitored. And both of those, on a day-to-day basis, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, were exceeding the federal guideline for sound waves moving across a distance by a factor of six to seven times that guideline. So, since we're a third of that guideline, we're not even measuring up to that, we're pretty confident that we're just background noise to the city itself. So, those are all programs that we can make available to you. So, again, we're not on every street. We can show you maps. We've pre-planned, we've met with Stan, we've pre-planned all of our moves, we've went back and looked at them. We're avoiding specifically schools and school zones. Those are critical to us. So, we will move away from schools and school zones, things like city golf courses. We're talking with them about just merely putting some geophone monitors up against the fences on the golf course, but not interfering with the golf course itself. So, we're cognizant of day-to-day work that goes on within the city. So, working hand-in-hand with Stan as the city manager and going with that group, we've been trying to move forward and get that plan in place, and we're on a couple of iterations now, trying to fit that in. So, that's in a quick nutshell, I know we have just short time, what we're planning and what we plan on doing. This goes through a little bit more of what we have. We're notifying the public that's going to be, and again, not every house will have a geophone in front of it, not every house will have a, or in the neighborhood have a vibrosized buggy go by. It's just, it's just certain pre-planned locations, and again, the maps we can drop off and leave for you if you'd like. Those people that will have, for instance, a geophone in the right-of-way street, right-of-way up against the curb, they'll be notified by, physically notified. If we can't reach them, we'll leave door placards that say, "We missed you, we'd love to talk to you about what's going on." In conjunction with that, we have other placards that we'll be putting on that talks about the geophysical process and what we're trying to do. So, we're trying to inform the public as we move along, and meet with them individually and talk to them. And it's things like if this program, if we're allowed to move forward, and let's say it's in the fall, and someone wants to mow their yard, all they do is notify us, we pick up our equipment. I'm a yard guy, I love doing my yard. Do your yard work, get everything done. When you're done, we'll put it back down and move it again when you're ready to do your yard work. So, those are the types of things we're trying to let people know, is it's not permanent, it's not, it's just, it's very temporary for a short period of time, and then we'll have everything picked up and gone. So, with that, that's a quick overview nutshell of what we're trying to do. Lot more detail in the books, be happy to discuss that with you guys, or anybody that has a question, you can email me, or whatever that you need to. But if I can answer any quick questions, or?
I have one.
Yeah?
Are you going to do blasting?
No, 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 not at all.
So, how are you going to get your seismic test? You mentioned some kind of a vehicle.
The vibrosized buggies, what they do, so this is the alternative. This has been, this has been in play for many, 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 many years now, but the urban ones are different. All they do is they put a, they put a pad, it's a protective pad on the ground, and it emanates sound waves down out of that pad.
So, it's not a traveling deal? You have a place you park it to test this?
Yeah, well, it does move. So, it'll be at that location, for instance, and it'll be there for maybe a minute, maybe two minutes, and then there'll be a group of three, and then when they're done, they lift, they move on to the next one, they do the same thing again. When they're done, they move on. And we don't ever repeat that, we don't ever come back to that location. So, we're there at a matter of, oh, gosh, we'll probably be there three or four minutes, maybe five max. And then, when we're done, sending the sound waves down to the ground, we just pick up, we just move right on. There's nothing left behind from the buggies that are moving through the city, because it's all carried with us.
What kind of decibels are we talking about?
Oh, these are pretty low frequencies. These are like 4 Hz to maybe 120 Hz. And so, decibel-wise, it's probably literally no louder than if a trash truck were driving through the neighborhood, for instance. That's what we've been equated to in the past. So, you don't hear us, most of the time, people ask when we're going to do it, and we try to do it, all of our activity during, you know, especially past school, going to school times, like 9:00 to 4:00, 9:00 to 3:00, depending on where we're at in the area. But it's done during the day, so we don't do any nighttime work. Done all during the day, so most people are at work many of the times, and when we're done, and a lot of times that we get calls and say, "When are we going to come by and do it?", we say, "We've done it during the day while you're at work." So, it happens fairly quickly. So, the other thing is, we do do, we have escort services with us. So, either professional flagmen are with us at all times for city street work. We'll also, if we may, and we haven't had this discussion yet, because we're very early on, but we would love to use off-duty police officers and help supplement them to join us. So, as we move through the city streets, and again, we don't block the streets, traffic moves by us just fine, and that's why we have professional flag staff, both in front and back. And we always usually have, for professionals, for the group and for the land, or for the homeowners, having, having an off-duty policeman really does make a difference. And so, we go through, we have all of our flagging, all of our escort services, everything available. So, traffic's moving by us at all times, and we're making sure our professional flagging staff, street staff are making sure that that's taken care of. So, we don't stop commerce, don't stop business, we just keep moving forward as, through the city street, without really being recognized as being a, you know, blocking traffic or blocking commerce, so.
The other question I have, you said that it's safe on the pipes and everything, but you don't do them around schools. Why do you not do them around schools?
That's just a courtesy to the school zones, to the safety of the school itself and kids going to school. That's all it is. So, that's just a courtesy to school zones to stay away, to try to, try to keep away if we can. Now, if we see something critical, we may, we may ask a high school or something to put a geophone in their parking lot, for instance, or something like that. But the sound wave activity of the trucks moving through and that, we stay away from the school zones, just as a professional courtesy to the school zones.
How long do you think it'll take, Al?
For the city of Moore, leading, so geophones go out for a period of time before the vibrosized trucks come in. Probably all said and done, 25 to 30 days total, from the first geophone being laid in the city of Moore to when we have everything picked up. And it moves through it. We just don't lay everything out and then pick it all up. It starts on the west side, and gradually is moving across to the east end of the job. And as we're moving across, we're picking up geophones behind us, we're picking up equipment behind us. So, not the whole city at any given time, we're going to have something on it the whole time we're there. We roll through it. But all said, from when we enter the city to the end, it's probably 25 to 30 days total.
If you want time on here, though. I would like some time to stay. Yeah?
Oh, absolutely.
Because before I risk billions of dollars of infrastructure, not only the city, but the citizens' structures, I want to do some research on this.
Oh, sure.
I haven't even told you enough on this subject, I didn't even ask a question.
Well, and like I say, we put information in here, but, because we talked with Stan, we said, you know, we'd love to meet with the engineers and talk to the city and go through the, go through the critical parts of the city and find out where they're at. As a whole, as a company, and as an operation, we practice avoidance. So, if there's a reason to avoid something, we practice that. Geophones, it doesn't matter. They just sit there, they just record data all day long. But as far as the vibrosized trucks goes, we want to work hand-in-hand with the city on that. We have to. It's very critical that we get everything that you guys have to make sure it works. And that's how we worked hand-in-hand with cities of Fort Worth and Arlington and Grand Prairie and all those in the past, so. And most, and there's letters of reference in the backs, police call, they're there for you, to give them a call and ask for information and how Dawson.
The presentation that they've put together here, I think, once you're able to look through that and run anything like that that you would like, I think you'll see what we're talking about, and you'll see why I couldn't tell you in emails and all that what all this was about, because it's technically pretty significant. But we feel comfortable, based on what we've visited with them and the investigations that we've done, that this will be okay, but you all need to, and we want you to be comfortable with it as well, because people are going to call you if there's a interesting look.
There's a nurse who I figured was going to call and say, "This was caused by this."
Yeah, we haven't generated any of those yet, so.
Is a general idea in your research for an oil or natural gas company to possibly drill in the area?
Yes, yes. They're, they have the units, the federal units, they're in, and it's one of those odd units for Oklahoma. It was produced early, in the 60s, actually in the 50s, and then a little bit in the 60s, and sort of left alone, with no real exploration work done in this particular unit, especially geophysical exploration work. So, we don't really have a true idea what's under the unit. Seismic data, this 3D seismic data, you know, it truly is. It's like a, it's just like doing an MRI on your, on your arm, or your heart, or whatever. That three-dimensional look is what we do in the subsurface, and it guides the drill bit. So, we're the roadmap, we're the random alley roadmap for the drill bit now. You just don't want, because it's difficult as they drill and go horizontal, which is the technology today, it's difficult to do that without a roadmap and be where you need to be. So, you don't want to, you don't want to set up a bunch of places and drill non-producing wells that just take up time and money and resources and headaches. So, we don't want that to happen, and that's what seismic does, is it guides the drill bit. So, it's just, it's, we just, one of those weird units in Oklahoma, it's just never had any true exploitation look at it before, and trade resources is definitely wanting to do that, so.
I'll make a motion to table this item, so we can all do a little homework.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, thank you.
Chief, contact information. You have a card?
I'm going to give you guys a card as I leave, so you got my email. We're Oklahoma City-based, here in the, our group here. Dawson Geophysical is Midland-based, Midland, Texas, corporately based, but we have offices here. We can come down at any time, answer any questions, we've got the full group here. And just real quickly, just say Dawson Geophysical, proud to say, 63-year company of, you know, last true good American companies in the US that do shoot seismic and acquire seismic data. And we're 63 years strong with an absolute strong balance book, which means we're going to be here for another 63 years. So, as we post bonds and get everything in place and do all this work for you guys, down the line, we're still here if there's another question. And we find that to be critically important to you guys, to have that trust in us as we work hand-in-hand with you guys, so.
Okay.
Cool. I will, I'll leave you all with a card, and I invite questions. And happy to come down and meet individually, if you just want to chat, talk about it. Engineers want full reports, we'll be happy to offer full reports as we have them. So, we just did that with another group, so. I think also, just hand-in-hand, we've had discussions with Oklahoma City Airport moving forward, city of Oklahoma City's in this as well, so we keep moving forward with everybody else as well, but.
They own the oil wells, though.
Do what?
They own the oil wells, we don't have any.
Yeah, well, that's.
That's a big difference.
Yeah, it is, it makes a difference.
It's $38 million a year to them. It's nothing to us, except a risk. So, that's what we got to look at.
Oh, absolutely right. Like I say, empirically, we can show you guys and be happy to do that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, oh, my pleasure. Thank you very much for your time. I'll bring your card in right away.
We have a table and motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item is tabled. Item number six is consider approval in agreement with Collins, Zorn, Wagner, P.C. for legal representation in the case of Rodriguez versus Warren Theaters LLC, case number CJ 2015-357.
Mayor, this is the law firm that we're recommending to represent the city of Moore in the lawsuit that's been filed in the Rodriguez case. Warren Theaters, the city, some, a couple of our police officers, several other individuals and entities have been sued. So, we're really just in the very beginnings of this, and so we need to hire their lawyers. Make a motion to prove.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Bill. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just a question. Did, on the selecting this law firm, did we find somebody who had, was well experienced in this area?
We absolutely have. David Lee is one of the attorneys, and we've used David for quite some time as far as some just internal issues in the police department. The firm that he's associated with, and the other attorney is Phil Anderson, is one of the considered experts in police matters, defending municipality, defending police officers. police officers, uh, in these cases and routinely speaks at OML and other type of legal seminars and this and that on the subject. So, we feel very confident that, that, uh, they're probably the best, uh, one of the best in O-K-C.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote? If there's no other discussion?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of an agreement for professional engineering services with EST Incorporated for Phase One of the I-35, 34th Street Bridge Project to include survey work and environmental site assessment in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Mayor, uh, council, this, uh, as it says, is the first of a multi-phase agreement with EST, the engineering design firm on the proposed bridge project. EST is the firm that has been working with us really for a number of years as we've contemplated this project and looked at various options, um, down there. So, this will get us started with the Phase One, which is the survey work and environmental review of the, um, parcels, uh, in and around that vicinity down there. There'll be, the way these kinds of engineering projects work, given the size of it, uh, is that there'll be multiple versions of the contract over time, so you'll see, I don't know, there'll be four or five more probably over time with regard to the various phases of the project. Um, the, um, we've not issued the bonds yet on this project, so, the city, um, in the short term, until we get the bond money available, the city will front these fees and then we'll have a, a reimbursement resolution on the next council agenda to formally say that the city, you as the city council, are gonna be reimbursing ourselves from the bond proceeds once that happens.
Okay. Sounds good. Most exciting thing on there.
What, just out of curiosity, what's our best guess to when this, when that bridge will be done?
Two years?
No.
Three?
Uh...
Five. Five, six, seven, eight.
I think, I, I think we probably won't start construction until mid to later twenty-sixteen at the earliest. Um, probably a year or so construction, so, um, January of twenty-eighteen maybe?
We could've built that up faster. I'm gonna ask you a couple of times. Are you sure the engineering getting even seen yet?
It's, it's a very complicated project, as you would know, um, and it, it just takes a long time. Working, we have to work obviously through ODOT, through Federal Highway Administration as well, on all the approvals necessary, the design engineering, just the engineering itself probably will take about a year and a bit.
It's a long time.
It is.
And that's probably fast-tracking at five years.
Well, and then, we have no control over what happens once it goes, uh, out of Federal Highway Commission. Thank you. That, you know, thing. Didn't happen.
They've been really good to work with us, though, so, I can't say anything-
They have. I don't anticipate any holdups, certainly with ODOT since we're funding the majority of it, although ODOT has committed and they personally committed to me and to the mayor to, to put four million dollars into this project, so, um, but, it's a, it's a structure over the interstate highway system and they've got to approve the construction plans and design details, Federal Highway Administration, whether it has ramps or not, Federal Highway also has to approve it, so.
Keep your fingers crossed. Okay. So, we, we have a motion, Robert, right?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, you made the second, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa, Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number A is consider approval of an engineering services contract with Cardinal Engineering in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars for Southwest Eleventh Street, Eagle Drive, uh, streetcape, straight, excuse me, streetscape project to be funded with CDBR, CDBG, DR funds. Uh, let me just, sorry.
Mayor and council, this contract is, um, uh, with Cardinal Engineering. Um, it is to fund, um, a, a streetscape and street improvement project, uh, by Plaza Tower School, um, along, uh, Eagle Drive and Southwest Eleventh Street. Um, the project will include limited topo, topographic survey, uh, around the school and some streetscape plans around the school, but the actual project will be from Eagle Drive at Nineteenth Street all the way up to Southwest Eleventh Street and then over to where we are doing, um, the, the bridge box to connect Eleventh Street across the, the creek. Uh, so, this project, we really wanted to make Plaza Tower School something that people could be proud of, um, kind of like a jewel in the neighborhood, uh, so, we're requesting this contract to, um, help us do that.
It also includes the design work of the gateways or entryways?
Yes.
You might say a little bit more about that.
Yes. So, uh, one of the things that we feel like worked really well in our past tornadoes was, uh, branding of the neighborhoods to help people not only have pride in the neighborhood if they stayed there, but then to attract new people who might be buying a vacant lot. So, we are undertaking some, uh, gateway improvements at certain neighborhoods in order to do that. And gate, uh, the Plaza Towers area will have, uh, those gateways included, um, and we're coming up with some designs. We did a, a visual preference survey that was up for about a month, um, and we have recently gotten the results back, so, we feel pretty confident that we know what each neighborhood desires to see, um, and so, we're gonna try to make our designs match that.
I would just have a question as I was looking through this. On, um, page one oh one, it talks about street scape plans and then parentheses, it has hard scapes and there refers to decorative lighting, lighting industry, people, traffic. The decorative lighting, is that, um, throughout the neighborhood, uh, where we put in street lighting, uh, something different than just the normal ones have a, uh, a light on?
Sure.
Is that different in that neighborhood?
I think that we can definitely look at it. I think that, um, Eagle Drive and Southwest Eleventh would be a prime, um, prime location to have some decorative street lighting. Uh, of course, OGNB provides those, uh, for a little bit added cost to the city, um, so, we can look at the numbers and see if they work out.
Well, this, this, is this gonna be funded through all, this will be funded, which I guess, throughout the, I don't know?
Yes, yes. The, the disaster recovery money, this will be funded using those funds.
And then on the, the buy, you know, the schools there, so a lot of kids walk to school, the sidewalks can accommodate them walking as well as trying to buy a skateboard or whatever.
Right, yes.
In the larger.
Yes. And we did a walkability audit around Plaza Tower School, uh, so, we've had some input as to the, the, uh, the, I'm sorry, uh, how the kids get to school, the route, thank you, the route that they are taking to get to the school, uh, so we know where to focus our, our efforts on.
Well, the bridge box is gonna be nice.
It's gonna be very nice.
Two streets.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So, move.
All right. Thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of an option site ground lease agreement, uh, with Branch Towers LLC to erect and maintain a communications tower at four hundred and one Telephone Road.
Mayor and council, this is the issue that we discussed, um, briefly at a city council meeting, um, a time or two ago. This is the site on Telephone Road where the current water tower is, where the recycle center is. Uh, the tower over there, as you know, has, uh, some cellphone antennas on it for AT&amp;T. Um, this, uh, lease would allow the, this Branch Towers, or Branch Communications to erect a monopole-type tower over there, um, and move the AT&amp;T, um, service off of the water tower and then potentially also be able to colo- to collocate other cellphone users on the, on the tower. There's a, I think there was a photo, uh, at your desk there this evening, this shows what it would look like, um, but it's a typical tower that you, um, see that these, uh, services are located on. The, um, lease is for one thousand dollars a month, um, for the first, um, company to be located on the site and then two hundred and fifty dollars a month if there's additional ones after the first, after AT&amp;T is located on it. It's a ten-year term lease to start with, um, has a two percent, um, increase after the first year, so. We feel like this is a better, uh, solution to the issues over there with the, the tower and all. We will, uh, not take the tower down until after they erect their tower and AT&amp;T has moved over and, and everything is working over there and then proceed at some point with removal of the tower.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you. Second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other, uh, comments or questions on this item? Anyone? No? Would you call for the vote?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. We have an addendum, item nine point one, a little bit out of place, it should've gone to note this part, but. Nine point one is discuss considering a deemed appropriate authorized the appointment of legal counsel for City of Moore Police Officers Joseph Bradley and Ryan Menard presented to eleven dash OS twenty-three dash one oh one and any other relevant state law for representation in the case number CJ two zero one five dash three five seven, Nair Rodriguez as next of kin to the estate of Louis Rodriguez versus Warren Theater LLC, Oklahoma, Warren Theaters LLC, Brian Clarkston, Tyler Hauser, uh, Chad Strang, the City of Moore and the Moore Police Department, Joseph Bradley and Ryan Menard, ETL.
Here, Mayor, this, uh, also has to do with the lawsuit that's been filed, the, uh, two police officers, or actually, all of our police officers that were involved, uh, two on duty and one off duty, but the officers also were named, uh, in the lawsuit, so, under our, um, agreement with the FOP as well as the city's, uh, responsibility to, um, represent officers or employee who is sued in an individual nature, uh, as long as they are acting within the scope of their authority or with their, with their duties. So, this, uh, is the request by the two officers, um, involved, uh, to be provided, uh, legal counsel, um, assuming that the city council and we believe that the officers were operating within the scope of their authority as police officers. The third police officer, um, that was, uh, off duty, that was working for warrant, um, will be provided legal counsel through warrant and their, their insurance, um, company and attorneys. Um, I will say, um, publicly, though, that, um, if we have any concern about our officer receiving adequate representation, we don't have any reason to believe that, but if there was, we'll certainly monitor that and watch that and make sure that the officer is receiving, uh, representation, appropriate representation. Um, if there's any issues with that, we'll come back and visit with you about that. But, for now, um, we would recommend that you approve this and provide counsel for the two officers in question.
Okay. Steve, I know you probably have no idea, but I'm gonna ask you anyways. Do you, uh, is this, is this something that you think will, uh, it can get handled within a, a year or does this go on and on and on, you think?
I, I would be surprised if it's handled within a year. Um, I don't know how long it will go, but these things can take quite some time. Um, very early on, there's been no discovery, there's been no, um, testimonies, um, depositions or anything like that.
Yeah, that's right.
At this point, uh, we just received service of the lawsuit, uh, last week, even though it had been filed a few weeks ago, I think, or a month or two ago. Um, so, again, very early on.
Gotcha. Hope I make a motion to approve.
All right. Second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll reassess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number ten is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held February seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in the amount of one million, eighty thousand, nine hundred and five dollars, seventy-three cents.
Make a motion to approve.
All right. Second? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number eleven is consider authorizing the extension of a twelve-inch water main on Southeast Fourth Street and on, and on Sunny Lane, uh, road for an approx- or approximate combined distance of sixteen hundred and fifty feet with the city MPWA and B&amp;K Investments LLC, Hooley Horn, equally sharing the cost in order to complete a looped water system in the area.
Mayor and council, if approved, this would be a partnership with the City of Moore and Horn Equipment. They have a need for city water. Mr. Horn owns several industrial pieces of parcels there along that stretch between our Fourth Street and Twelfth Street, and he has a proposal for another big user. And they came to us requesting this partnership and the benefit to the City of Moore, it'll complete that loop on that system there. Right now, currently, we have a twelve-inch water main that dead-ends where Highland Baptist Church is on the west boundary of their property. And if you recall, six months or a year ago, we partnered up with R&amp;R Homes and did an extension on Sunny Lane, approximately the half-mile line and then north to serve that mini-storage that's sitting there today, just a short distance south of Fourth Street. What the request is, is for the city and Horn Equipment to partner on the extension of the twelve-inch from where we stopped, there by the mini-storage, south of Fourth Street, extend it north to Fourth Street and then back west and make that tie-in there at Highland Church. That would complete that loop. And Horn Equipment has also, to serve their needs, they are willing to extend that twelve-inch from that corner of Southwest Fourth, Southeast Fourth, excuse me, and Sunny Lane, north, approximately between a quarter and a half a mile to serve that industrial user that's to be located there. And the approximate cost on the city's behalf would be, in the neighborhood, of sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
I just have one. I need to just show you. Um, if you may, is that, is that open to city or are we doing anything there?
Actually, the water line, the, Mark's question is, that stretch of Sunny Lane north of Fourth Street, the west side of Sunny Lane's Moore, east side is Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City has no infrastructure in that mile and the industrial user is located in Oklahoma City right here. And that user would be in Oklahoma City limits, but it would be from Moore's water supply. That's not uncommon along the, our, the boundaries of Moore and Oklahoma City, it works both ways. In some cases, we serve Oklahoma City users and vice versa. There's others where they serve us.
This is the same user where we, um, authorized them to tie the sewer from that This is the same user where we authorized them to tie the sewer from that system into our system.
About a year ago?
A few months ago, I think, yeah.
And I stand to be corrected, but doesn't an employer, approximately seventy-five employees?
Cleaning that loop is a good thing for us.
Yes, definitely.
What does that do, what does that do for us, Stan, whenever you think?
Well, in an outage, it gives better pressure.
Okay, gotcha.
And if we have an outage, we're not, we're not impacting near as many users, customers. We can isolate the repair, we can feed it from the other direction. It's a great benefit for, like, in high-use months and the summer months, but also when we have a main break or something in the area, we impact very few people.
To further answer your question, Mark, the water line, that would be on the west side of Sunny Lane going north from Fourth in the right-of-way, would be a City of Moore water line. Any water that's, water line that's extended east over to that would be a fire line or not owned by the, and maintained by the city.
I'll make a motion to authorize the extension.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, Dave made the second, thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion on this item? I'd just like to say, thanks for having your business in mind, we appreciate it. Would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item number twelve is the consent docket. Item A, accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held February seventeenth, two thousand fifteen. Item B, approve payments on, of a workers' compensation settlement in the amount of thirty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars to Brian Bishop for claim number two zero one four dash zero one zero three seven dash X, twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars to Brian Bishop for claim number two zero one four dash zero nine two zero seven dash X, and a hundred and fifty-two dollars to Brian Bishop for claim number two zero one four zero nine two zero six dash zero. Authorize payment on ad liborum tax rolls and supplement the budget accordingly. Item C, approve payment of a court ordered workers' compensation settlement in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, fifty cents to Tony Towery for claim number two zero one three dash one three six eight two A. Item D, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in the amount of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars, thirty-seven cents.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? It's a consent docket, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number thirteen is item A, a citizens forum for items not on the agenda, if there's no one signed up, would anyone like to speak? Okay, item B, items from the city council or trustees.
Mister, you had a question from a citizen asking about the park, and they were just wondering how we were doing, if it was on schedule, or if there's any new information.
Todd.
I didn't have the answer, they were just wondering how things are going.
The Sitch Park?
Yes, Sitch Park, and whether or not we're on schedule, so.
We're probably a couple, three weeks behind schedule due to weather. Right now, as you can see, the structural steel is going up and all that, and so that should be done probably within a couple of weeks. The aquatic park side is, is under construction, a lot of it's underground, a lot of piping and that stuff, you ought to see some verticality here in the next two to, two weeks to a month or so, so, they feel confident that they'll make that time up, that we're behind a little bit now.
Is this a schedule to completion time, approximately, what do you think the?
I think we'll, they should be done, their goal is to have it done September, October timeframe, their contract is, I think, October ninth. Once we get the occupancy, we'll, there'll be a thirty to forty-five day period where we move in, so December one is our target date of, to be open to the public.
I just received a couple of positive comments, you can hang out, but just in general, positive comments about the city's response to the, you know, I see those from some people, so it's always good to pass on the good things that appear from the citizens and that's happening.
Anything else? Item C is items from the trustees and the city members.
That was one thing I was going to mention as well, Mark, that is, just a thank you to our street guys that work out there, our guys, and as well as Silver Star employees, and Richard, and Stan, spending a lot of their time in off-hours and weekends, making sure that our streets and roads are safe to drive on, and we do get positive compliments and positive vibes from that, and I definitely appreciate it and want to pass that on to our folks.
Okay, that's it. Item fourteen is adjourned.
So, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you for coming.